All right. Good evening. Calling to order our Tuesday, April 18th meeting. I will have our city clerk start with our roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe?
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine?
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Otuja Endapure?
Here.
Councilmember O'Sheen O'Farrell?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember O'Farrell, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Endapure, do you happen to have the land acknowledgement up? Great, thank you.
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically this Noqami Indian tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. So first up, I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And then we have public comment first. I'll start in the room. I have Karen.
Hello, I'm Karen Hoyam. As neighbors of Inglewood Middle School, we're here to testify about the proposal to redesign Inglewood's athletic fields to add lighting and to greatly extend the hours and volume of use at that site. We know that the council desires to provide athletic fields for Samamish residents. We're here to ask that the scope of the project be amended to allow this increased field availability while also protecting us as neighbors. It is important for us who live around this site to be able to enjoy the day, the edges of the day in our homes and yards, and the best way to do this is to eliminate lights from the project. Despite Parks and Rec, knowing beforehand that sound has a huge negative impact on neighbors of fields, no protections from sound were included in the design. Not only this, but the design itself by changing field locations increases the volume of noise. We've met with Parks and Rec staff on four occasions to discuss these issues, one of them a joint meeting with Lake Washington yesterday afternoon. Yet Park staff insist on retaining the lights and renting the fields until nine. This would be a tremendous burden for us and our neighbors, both from the lights themselves and from the sound usage brings. The plan is for two to three fields to be rented simultaneously with seating for up to 260 fans. These fields come to the edges of Inglewood's property. For us here today, there's a chain link fence and then only 20 feet to our properties. Samamish residents who use these fields will be able to come enjoy them and then go home and rest in their homes. But for us as neighbors, we're being asked to absorb the noise all weekend, all summer, and all evening till nine. We appeal to you. This shouldn't be. Instead, having no lights or ending field rentals at 7:00 PM would allow us and other neighbors to enjoy our own properties in peace at the quiet edges of the day, just as other Samamish residents are going to enjoy those fields during the other hours. Because these changes were not part of a master plan, only 13 homes were notified, a much smaller number than those who will be significantly impacted, and the letter did not mention that the city proposes to rent these fields until nine at night and more than double the rentals. Inglewood Fields, as seven of the eight middle school fields in Lake Washington, have little to no borders between them and residential properties, and these fields were designed to be used during daylight hours solely for that school's athletic use. High schools were built with the intention of lights and lots of noise, so retrofitting these fields for city use, since they don't have borders, must include protections.
Thank you. Rahm?
Hello. Hello, I'm a resident of same neighborhood that as Karen mentioned. I have similar kind of concerns especially related to the sound. As she mentioned, the proposed design of the fields relocates the softball field adjacent to the baseball field, consolidating and increasing the noise from both when used in the tandem. So both of these fields have seating areas. The softball fields bleachers has maximum seating of 126 people, and the baseball fields has a maximum capacity of 134. The noise of fans cheering will be great, even in much smaller numbers. The softball, home base, and bleachers are very near the western fence, which is currently planned to be a chain link, as she mentioned. The baseball field seated areas would be lower than the street and the parking lots level, so much as its square level. The sound from these seating will aim towards the western properties where we are currently living in the western side adjacent of the middle school. Renting two of three fields concurrently will result in a great increase of sound. Even without spectators, the sound level from even two fields being rented concurrently will more than double the noise received by adjacent properties. Because as we all have experienced today, when one is in a noise environment, these present increased volume to be heard. So we want to bring our concerns to your attention as the current design is not giving any kind of resolutions or remediations, though we had multiple meetings with this design team, even though we had a last time also, we had a meeting with them. So I will conclude here and I will share my time to my next neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny?
Hi, my name is Danny Van Velsen. We kindly and yet strongly request for your consideration that a new notification be sent out before the CEPA notification to all the other neighbors with the correct information if possible, and just to be neighborly because, so that they know what is coming. Nobody was aware of the 9:00 PM. The other is that the fields not be used after 7:00 PM, and therefore that also the lights be removed, lights be removed out of the scope of the project. This will not only protect us as neighbors from the light pollution and reflection from the field, but this will also allow some respite from the noise and activities on the fields. Euphemism that is used of happy kids playing, which is the case today on the fields, like it's wonderful on the weekend to see some kids playing there. But I'm sure you can imagine the continuous ping of aluminum bats and soccer whistles of referees. It will get old very quick and especially late at night. So having a time limit will at least give us some time to enjoy our properties and gardens in the evening, so we can have dinner and relax outside, and for me personally to put my son peacefully to bed at a reasonable hour. That sound privacy and trespassing can be addressed by adding sound protection at the appropriate location of the current chain link fence. We've been told at Parks and Rec that the sound wall is impossible to do there, but there could be other fence materials or other barriers perhaps considered for the plan to give us some respite. There's a sound ordinance that prohibits any loud and raucous noise with unreasonable interference with the use of residential properties. The sound from the school's current field design hours and volume of use is of no comparison to that noise that would result from these changes. Again, we're not against improving the fields. We cheer it on. We are neighbors in the community too and love to see all the improvements being made. It's just that the extent and burden put on us neighbors feels extremely burdensome, and we ask for a neighborly resolution. Our homes need a fence that protects us from our privacy and is not scalable to avoid crossover shortcuts into the field, as well as to avoid potential climbing over the fence onto our properties when kids are being bored watching a game. The current plan, as mentioned before, is a chain link fencing, but this definitely does not provide any privacy, noise isolation, or prevention of trespassing. You might say, well, why didn't you build a fence on your side of the wall? Unfortunately, logistically, that's not really possible because our properties are much lower. So certain parts were like eight, six or eight feet lower than the field, which is going to be raised by a foot as well. And other parts were like 20 or 12 to 14 feet lower. If you then add a fence for eight feet to give some privacy, you can imagine like you're going to get 16 to 20 foot high fences on our side, whereas if it was at the fence of the fields, it would just be eight feet. And then hence us asking to work together for a neighborly solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Julie?
Hi, I'm Julie Miller. I live with these lovely neighbors. And I'd like to talk a little bit more about the amplification or the increased volume and range of sound with this project. More and stronger protections are desperately needed and to be, need to be included in the ILA amendment between the city and the district to protect residents from amplification long term, not only outside our homes, but we hear the sound inside our homes as well. In addition to amplification being prohibited, the city needs to remove the clause allowing the Director of Parks and Recreation to approve exemptions to the rule. The city needs to be bound to monitor and exact penalties to anyone who ignores the prohibition of amplification in a manner that effectively enforces compliance. The future addition of sound equipment or use of the school's PA system by the city for outside events and/or field use needs to be expressly prohibited in this project. I'd also like to address water issues. We have been told there will be no water issues onto our private road or other portions of our property. However, these athletic fields are and will continue to be higher in elevation than our road. We've made the request to Parks and Recreation staff that this be looked at, into because any water issues will greatly affect the maintenance of our road. Removal of old-growth trees in favor of younger trees, for example, will impact water retention and flow. In summary, council, we ask that lights be removed from the scope of this project. We ask that these fields not be rented past 7:00 PM at night to protect the margins of our day from the sound and activity of these fields. We ask that some form of sound protection be incorporated into the design. We ask that a non-scalable privacy-protecting fence be incorporated into the design rather than chain link, and that the current trees be retained to the greatest extent possible. We ask that a requested stronger protection against sound and amplification be included in the ILA to protect us and other residents long term. As you know, the current proposal is a great departure for Lake Washington School District middle schools and for the city. We understand that improving recreational use is important for our city's residents. If this proposal moves forward as currently planned, implementing fields without protecting neighbors, it will become a precedent. It is important to be thoughtful and measured in how the city increases availability of athletic fields, doing so in a manner that is being a good neighbor to Samamish residents and to the greater region. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready for online.
For online commenters, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. Press star nine of calling by phone. Okay, I do not see any commenters. Thank you. Back to you, Mayor.
Are you sure?
Yes, I have, I have six attendees. They all show up, but nobody has raised their hand.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Krista. All right, so then we have our executive session. Anticipation is, no, anticipated time, not anticipation, 15 minutes. So pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i and council may take action. So we will be back at seven. Thank you. I like to wait for my thumbs up first. Councilmember Howe?
I move to authorize an offer of judgment in the pending Valdarama PRA lawsuit in the amount recommended by the city's legal counsel.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So next we have the consent calendar. Would anyone like to make a motion for that?
I motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions on those items? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, presentations, proclamation. So first we have Earth Day. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Proclamation, Earth Day, April 22nd, 2023. Whereas Earth Day is an opportunity to bring awareness and renew the commitment to preserving and protecting the state of our environment through community service and responsible stewardship. And whereas the global theme for Earth Day 2023 is invest in our planet, which focuses on challenging governments, citizens, and businesses to take action against the climate crisis by acting boldly to accelerate change toward preserving and protecting our health, our families, and our livelihoods by investing in our planet. And whereas, as a community, we are being called to invest in our planet by getting inspired, taking action, and being part of the green revolution that highly values the vitality and preservation of our unique and beautiful local natural environment. And whereas climate change and environmental challenges continue to be observed and experienced at both a global and local level, and whereas Samamish is committed to promoting and supporting positive actions to improve sustainability, preserve natural assets, create a healthier environment, and make a positive impact on the environment in celebration of Earth Day. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Kaylee Clark, on behalf of Samamish City Council, does hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2023 as Earth Day in the city of Samamish. And I'd also like to add or invite everyone to join us on Saturday, the 22nd, from 11:00 to 2:00 at Beaver Lake Park and Lodge for Earth Day celebrations. It should be a lot of fun.
Awesome, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Well, this is a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month for May 2023. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage in the United States was officially celebrated beginning in 1978 and was made into a month-long event in 1992. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander, or AAPI, Heritage Month seeks to honor and recognize the contributions of residents from Asia, India, and the Pacific Islands. And whereas Native Hawaiians, Chinese, and Japanese were first to migrate to the Pacific Northwest and were known for handling canoes and transporting goods, construction, and railroad expansion. And whereas Asian Pacific encompasses all of the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands of Melanesia, including New Guinea, New Caledonia, Vanuatu, Fiji, and the Solomon Islands. Micronesia, which includes Marianas, Guam, Wake Island, Palau, Marshall Island, Kiribati, Nauru, and the Federated States of Micronesia and Polynesia, including New Zealand, Hawaiian Islands, Ratuuma, Midway Islands, Samoa, American Samoa, Tonga, Tavula, Cook Islands, French Polynesia, and Easter Islands. And whereas during AAPI Heritage Month, we acknowledge Asians and Pacific Islanders have lived and worked in Washington for more than 200 years. And the Asian population in Samamish is 31.7 per the U.S. Census, contributing to Washington's and the United States' economy, culture, education, politics, arts, literature, science, and technological developments, despite institutional and systemic injustice designed to prevent and limit achievements and contributions. And whereas during AAPI Heritage Month, we acknowledge the additional determination, hard work, and perseverance AAPI must put forth to be heard and seen, and that these additional efforts are a result of inequitable institutional and systemic injustices. And whereas despite these contributions and leadership, the role of AAPI in U.S. history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and the study of America. Be it further resolved that the city of Samamish strongly encourages our staff and community to observe, recognize, and celebrate the cultural heritage and the contributions of Asian American and Pacific Islanders to our country, our state, our city, our schools in May 23rd as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, next up, unfinished business. So Carrie, I think this is going to you. Ordinance 2023 552.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, city manager, and members of the public. This item is a continuation of the discussion started at your last regular meeting two weeks ago on April 4th. As you recall, it was part of the 2023 work plan that council adopt a code of conduct, which you did at your last meeting, in addition to a code of ethics, which is before you tonight. As we discussed two weeks ago, the intent of the council was to not just have this code of ethics adopted as a policy, but codified in the Samamish municipal code. So what you have before you tonight is a new proposed Chapter 2.85 of the Samamish municipal code. This code of ethics is not invented from whole cloth, but rather based on similar codes of ethics from other neighboring jurisdictions, namely city of Kirkland, city of Mercer Island. And it is intended to be not just a rule, a set of rules, conduct to adhere to the highest ethical standards while serving in your elective office, but also for appointed members of boards and commissions and multi-member tasks force and bodies that the council appoints. There's also a procedure in here, recall, where there can be a request for an advisory opinion by an ethics officer, so there is some potential financial impact related to adoption of this. You will need to hire someone to serve as your ethics officer, as well as potentially a hearing examiner in the event there is a need for a hearing to make sure that due process is afforded and that the rules of evidence are followed. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions anyone has, but before you tonight is the proposed new Chapter 2.85.
Great, thanks so much, Carrie. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we adopt the ordinance, adopt a code of ethics for elected and appointed officials to be codified in Chapter 2.85 of the Samamish municipal code.
Second. All right. Yeah?
Sorry, so to speak to that, I just want to thank Carrie and everyone who helped to put this together. I'm super excited to see this in place, and I love that we have a process for, for due process. And I think it's, it's long overdue, so really appreciate the work.
And I do want to take a brief moment and acknowledge that I did get a lot of help on this from Lacey Lewis, as well as Mike Sugg, and so I want to call them out for helping with this.
Thank you, everybody. All right, any other discussion or questions on this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty, on to new business. We have a resolution for approving the 2023 Budget and Work Plan Program for ARCH, the Regional Coalition for Housing. So we have David Pyle and maybe Miriam?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, David Pyle. So we are actually well ahead of schedule tonight, which is very impressive. So we are waiting for our ARCH staff, who are going to be supporting us. We have Lindsay Masters and Elsa Kings from ARCH. She'll be joining me here at the table. However, I don't know if there is a way under Robert's rules of order to juggle the agenda. There's another agenda item that is down the line related to trees that we could push forward and take care of that while we wait for Lindsay and Elsa to arrive.
I'm going to look at Carrie. She's going to say make a motion to amend or something?
Exactly.
Oh, who's doing it?
I move that we amend the agenda and move item 14 to the front of the line.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so cancel what I said before. Item number 14, resolution concerning consequences for unauthorized tree removal. David Pyle?
Great, and if you could promote me, that would be great. Thank you. I don't know what the opposite is. Is it being demoted when I'm taken down from panelist? Just a sec here, I'm going to go ahead and find the right presentation. Share my screen. All right. Good evening, council again. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. Tonight I have for your consideration a proposed resolution to help clarify for staff some of the issues we've been facing with some recent tree removal cases and hearing examiner decisions. One recent case really highlights some of the issues we're facing, and it's embedded into the agenda bill for this evening. It was the George Tree case. The, the issues that we, we see are when in 2015, the, the tree rules included an amendment to the Code Enforcement section of the code, Title 23, that added a $1,500 per diameter inch fine, which was seen to be a deterrent to people removing trees without permit. At the same time, the tree rules that were adopted do offer for exceptions and do offer for people to move, remove trees to make landscape changes. And when there are hazardous trees or imminent threat trees, you are allowed to take action to remove those trees with mitigation and replanting. Development is also limited in the number of trees that can be removed and does also require substantial replanting, ultimately ideally to replace the tree canopy that's lost as part of development. So one of the, the issues is, is that when, when tree removal occurs, we are left with imposing a civil penalty on a property owner or a developer, whomever it may be, and also then working with them to pursue mitigation to ensure adequate restoration occurs of the site. We feel that it is really important for us to maintain our ability to use the fine structure as a deterrent because mitigation in itself is not something that is an adequate deterrent. Anyone will simply remove their trees and say, oh, I'll happily replant them in, in a location where I want and to get the, the view that I want or whatever it is that I want to do with the property. I do understand the interest in private property rights and wanting to be able to do what you want with your property. However, the community has spoken by the passage of ordinance 2015 395, where we put in place the tree rules that we have today. We also have an urban forest management plan, one of the objectives of which is to maintain and grow our urban canopy, urban forest canopy, and we, we also spend quite a bit of resource managing our tree permit center, where we have virtually free tree permits and lots of assistance and help from our permit staff. So one of the consequences of tree removal is, is that there is a significant landscape change that affects neighborhoods, properties, and the character of the city. There are often many large trees that are removed as part of a code case, and if we don't have a deterrent in place to keep people from doing this, they will go ahead and do it and happily replant. Our ask of you this evening is to help clarify that we treat all property owners the same, that the consequence for tree removal is both mitigation in the form of replanting and a civil fine, that fines are an essential deterrent to unpermitted tree removal, that director means director, and that the role of the hearing examiner is on appeal to determine if a violation did or did not occur.
Great, thank you.
Happy to answer any questions, and we have a suggested motion.
Yeah, thank you so much, David. I guess the only other question, since we flip flopped everything, is this resolution 1007 or still 1009? Leave it the same, okay, great. Council, do you have any questions or want to make that motion? Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Howe?
I move that the city council adopt the proposed resolution concerning consequences for unauthorized tree removal, clarifying that it is the intent of the city council that the city treat all property owners as the same, confirming that the reference to director explicitly refers to the director of community development, and confirming that the consequences for unauthorized tree removal includes both mitigation and a civil fine.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? I just want to say thank you for putting this forward. Appreciate it.
I have one question.
Yeah.
David, do we need to put in anything that says like Director of Community Development or as assigned by the city manager? So for example, if you were away or something. Like, I know you don't ever take time off, but what if you did?
So there, there is a, but this is a great suggestion, and fortunately in the definition, it does say as assigned. So there, there is a, but this is a great suggestion, and fortunately in the definition, it does say as assigned.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Nupure?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for clarifying and, you know, given that, the rulings that we've had from the hearing examiner. And I think our legal counsel was also consulted when we came up with this resolution and the direction, is that correct?
Yes, we, we actually, if you recall, maybe, I don't know how much you recall, but with some past tree cases, there have been some appeals that, and we had wanted to file an appeal on our recent hearing examiner decision. However, due to some procedural issues, we were not able to do so. So the, one other angle to take is to, to get direct policy interpretation from the council on the issue, so that we're able to proceed with confidence, knowing that we're doing what our council wants us to do.
Right, and I would say not just the council, I think people in Sammamish really care deeply and dearly about their trees. And I think we have one of the strongest sort of rules around trees and people cut down trees. So it's really important that the policy that we have, have some teeth behind that, and nobody can just kind of come in and overrule them, right? So I think this is, that is why I support sort of making sure that we can enforce the, the policies correctly as well. So thanks.
No problem, and we're, we're always looking for ways to improve how we administer the tree permits. So that's a big deal to us, and we're constantly training and retraining and reconsidering what, you know, what our process is to help people get permits effective, you know, very efficiently, so that there isn't a, a large barrier to them taking, taking what legal actions they're allowed to take to make changes to their property.
Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna follow up on this to note that we are, spoiler alert, in the upcoming newsletter, there will be a blurb about tree permits and the need to get one and how to go about doing that, just as a reminder. As we are moving into spring yard maintenance season, that it's important to have that in mind. So that will be coming out with the newsletter in a couple of weeks.
Alrighty, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2023-1009, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great. Are you ready?
So we are still waiting.
Cool.
I'd, I'd, my, my guess is about, they said they'd be here at 7:30, which would have put them here a half an hour ahead of when we anticipated them to be up on the agenda. I don't know if there's something else that we could move ahead also?
Yeah, I don't know if Audrey is on or to move that, or we just take a 10-minute break?
All of our, the three panelists that we need are all showing up as attending currently, so we can try them, maybe.
Yeah, and, and, Mayor, if I may, I believe our, that's all right. Oh, the ARCH folks are here?
Yeah, I think she'll try to promote them and see what happens.
Mayor, if, if it makes sense, one thing, if we wanted to consider juggling just a little bit, I have a short City Manager report that I could give now while we wait for folks to, 'cause we're more proficient than we usually are.
It's that sunshine, I just wanna be outside. All right. Yeah, I guess I'll make the motion then, is that all right, to amend, and have you start? Okay, all right, I move that we amend the agenda to move our City Manager Report to now, under new business, after item 14 that was 12.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, please, Scott.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity. I do wanna say that Councilmember Stewart stole my first thunder about reminding everyone about their birthday celebration this Saturday. But we are excited about it and really looking forward to having folks come out to Beaver Lake Park and join us. I wanted to follow up and, and note that we will be updating the city's current Public Records Act policy. And we will issue, we will come back to council with an updates for the new current, new Public Records Act policy and a new retention policy as follows. For the public records policy, the city's existing policy has been updated to reflect, or will be updated, I should say, to reflect a new section that creates a procedure for the city's public disclosure officer to follow when seeking records held by former staff and city officials. Additionally, some minor changes to the policy will be implemented after discussion and consultation with the state attorney general, open government, ombuds office. These minor changes are related to how requests for clarification are made and copying fees. And that will be coming back in a resolution to council, hopefully at the next meeting. And we will have a private device and accounts record retention policy. This policy creates a procedure by which council members will forward to a folder on the city's SharePoint file any city-related base, business on their personal devices and accounts. The purpose of this policy is twofold. One, to ensure that the council, that the city complies with records retention requirements for public records held on personal devices and accounts. And two, to respond to public records requests more efficiently and effectively. So that policy also will be brought in the form of a resolution at the next meeting for council's consideration. And presumably, council approves, that will go into effect as soon as that passes. So those policies will be coming forward shortly as part of our ongoing effort to, for trust and transparency and to, to comply with the Public Records Act. I also want to note that Public Works Week is coming up in May, which is fun for our Public Works folks. And we would like to invite the public to come a little bit early to the May 16th meeting. We'll have some of our Public Works vehicles out for folks to come check out, some of our bigger trucks and things. As, as a way, they're kinda cool, actually. I've gotten a ride in one of them, and I had no idea how large it actually is and how many crazy controls and buttons there are on it. And as well, for anyone that's interested, and for council in particular, we'll be giving chores of the Traffic Management Center. It's not as exciting as it sounds, but to come check it out and, and see how it works. And anyone else that would like to join us. So that's the May 16th meeting. We're inviting folks to come at 5:30, we'll give tours and hang out for the first, you know, 45 minutes or so, and then we'll come in and, and hold the regular meeting after that. I also wanna note two items for council regarding our meeting schedule. In the month of July, the first meeting of the month happens to fall on July 4th. Technically, we are holding a meeting that involves fireworks and music. However, the question for council is, are you okay just holding two meetings at a month instead of three? And so I'm just looking for head nods here, if that makes sense. And does council wanna hold an August recess? Again, again, this is your discretion, so I'm looking for head nods. All right, so we will be moving forward with the current schedule, which has two meetings in July, be the 11th and the, what is that, 18th, thank you, math. Again, I'm, I'm with the mayor on this, so, so the 18th. And then we will take the August recess, and we will be back the first Tuesday in September. So with that, that is all I had on my, on my City Manager Report.
So much good news. Does anyone have a question for Scott on, on any of that? I'm assuming no one is here yet, maybe?
They said they'd be here at 7:30.
Yeah, and I didn't know, I'm just looking at the topics that Audrey has, they don't look like the shortest of items, so.
So, so Mayor, if I may, Audrey is, is on with me here, 'cause the, the cool part about electronics. There are two things, Audrey is, was gonna give a quick update on the 2/28 resurfacing. And we're prepared for the snow and ice presentation. It's not super short, but it's also not super long.
Okay.
So.
So I move to amend the agenda again. Sorry, who's that? Sorry. Oh, okay. Yeah, get comfortable, yeah. Yeah, sorry about that.
So if that makes sense, we can do that and maybe allow our guests to
Absolutely.
pull, gather stuff together, and, and then we can sort of flip the order a little bit.
Cool.
So it would be Agenda Item 16 is what would be moving forward.
All right, so I move to amend the agenda again and bump item 16, our presentation on snow, ice, level of service, and a 2/28 update to right now, which would be under item 14, you get it, it's a movement of new business. Second. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, thanks, Audrey, take it away.
Of course, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. And thank you for the opportunity to provide a quick update on the 2/28 overlay project. We have been very excited, we were quite lucky with the weather last week, and we're able to get almost all of the paving done. So this week, we're just in our final stages of the project, bringing all of the irons up to grade. So there'll be some intermittent lane closures, but a majority of the work is done. And if you haven't driven the road yet, it looks fantastic. So one of the final pieces will also be the road striping. So we've been updating our project website every day, but in the meantime, if you have questions, please reach out to us. And I will share my screen and transition to all things snow and ice.
I know, I was just gonna say, it's in the rearview mirror, mirror.
Yeah. Not for us, we're, we're already planning. I will try to keep this relatively quick, so we can stay on schedule here. We brought this forward to council for the intent of updating our snow and ice management plan this year. It's an older plan, it's been in place since 2010. And we'd really, it is in much need of, of being updated. So it's also an item on the, the city's work plan, and really looking forward to diving in and, and looking at some possible levels of service for us to continue our operations at. So just a high-level overview, I'll kinda skim through some of the slides. I know we went into some of the details last December, and I hope that you're able to join us in May. So you can, we'll have our 10-yard plow truck in the parking lot for anyone that would like to come and see it up close. But again, we'll kinda go over some overview topics this evening, go through some rough stats on costs behind the 2022, 2023 winter season, some program improvements that we've seen along the way. And then we'll provide a, a brief introduction to our level of service, and we'll be back a handful of times this year to council for both our level of service selection and our updated plan. So this slide should look familiar, this is from the December 2022 presentation. But I know for most folks, the snow is in the rearview mirror, but we are really just diving into our resource planning for the year. So we're taking another look at our budgets and really trying to see if there's some ways we can continue to improve our program with equipment and different technology as well. Again, I already identified, this is also in the agenda packet for you, but this is an important item for Public Works and for the city as well. It's also in the city 2023 work plan as item S3, under the goal of safety. Just also wanted to take a few minutes here to kinda set back and see how important this plan is. And there, there will be a handful of components for the plan. So the first step in the plan is identifying a service level for the city. We have a very high level of service, and I'll go into those details in a minute. That level of service selection will then inform our snow ice management plan update. And that will be brought forth back to council in September of this year, but it really is intended to set policy for our level of service. That information will then be wrapped into an internal program implementation guide that our crews will use, so that we can make sure that we are aligning our service levels with what the policy direction is set by council, and that, of course, sets expectations for the community. And then, of course, snow starts in November, hopefully not earlier, but we are ready when it does. This slide is also from the December 20, 2000, last December's presentation, but just wanting to have that reminder out there of how many centerline miles and lane miles that we do service. We have a lot of infrastructure out there, and we service those roads down to bare pavement. So that is an exceptionally high level of service. We have 12 drivers per shift and 12 trucks, and I'll go into the details on what those trucks can do in a minute. We also have capacity at our Maintenance and Operations Center to store quite a bit of rock salt, as you can see, and a lot of over 35,000 gallons of liquid de-icer or CCB. This is just not all of our fleet, but some, so we do have 12 trucks, like you said, that, that do support snow and ice. And we have a lot of different attachments essentially that can be added on to the trucks. So we have different types of plows for different widths of road and different types of trucks. We have different volumes of sanders that can attach to the truck, and then also different volumes of de-icing components that attach to the trucks. And in general, this is somewhat simplified version of the phases of snow response. But in general, there's five phases. So this all happens in that November to March timeframe, as we're really diving into snow and ice. So the first thing that happens when we get that weather forecast is we pre-treat our roads. I do wanna put a caveat out there that the pretreatment can only occur within certain temperature ranges, and we're often limited by the rainstorms that sometimes come right on the heels of a snowstorm. So that can make it tricky. We do use calcium chloride with boost, or typically known as CCB, or rock salt on our roads. And what that does is it reduces the bond that, when the snow falls on the pavement, so that we're able to actually remove the snow much easier. So the second phase, we really enter into snow removal. So most of our plans right now, in most, most cities are set at a current level of plowing begins around an inch of snow accumulation on the road surface, and of course, more. We start with our lifeline routes, our priority one routes, and then we move on to our priority two roads, and three, and on down the line, we do have four routes. We don't move on to our priority two roads until all of our lifeline roads are down to bare pavement. Then we move into our priority four roads, and we, then we begin service on all of our other streets. This is something that not every city necessarily does. And this really third phase of our program is something that will be really, will set apart our different levels of service that we're asking council to consider later this spring. And finally, our debris cleanup will last for weeks after a storm. So along with that comes downed trees, flood response, and we spend weeks and weeks cleaning and maintaining all of our equipment. And then finally, we shift our crews back off from our 24 hours a day, 12-hour shifts, back to their typical eight-hour schedules. But again, that response continues for many, many weeks after. So then at this point, the downed trees are taken care of, they're out of the right of way, and we're into pothole repair. You'll recognize a few of these photos, these were taken last year with some different equipment issues, as well as downed trees and just some of our trucks maneuvering around the, the back of our yard at the MOC. For this particular winter season, as you'll recall, we had two lengthier snow and ice events. That ice event that hit right before the Christmas holiday was a little bit challenging regionally, but in Sammamish as well, then we had some smaller events as well. But even with the smaller events, our crews are typically activated into those 12-hour shifts. I've already gone over kind of our level of service, but I did want to just point out that every year, we really take a lot of time to evaluate our internal operations. And we had a lot of changes this year in terms of how we included different internal stakeholders to our communications. And I think that was really reflected in our external communications this year as well. So it was a neat process to be a part of. Okay, we do have a few planned improvements on that note for this upcoming year, regardless of level of service selected. So a big improvement will be updating and upgrading our, our maps. So the base layer of our map, that streets layer, is being updated as we speak. We are hoping to have two separate maps for, one map that shows still removal routes and one map that shows our de-icing efforts. We believe it's a little bit confusing for the public to have the maintenance zones on there, so we'll take those off. Those are really a feature that is useful for our crews and, and isn't really that helpful for communication with the public. So we'll likely end up with an implementation map, as well as a map that is out for the public to utilize and to be able to see where, what routes are our priorities. And we'll have some other updates as well that are a little bit smaller, like changing our colors and different things. We're also evaluating some really great equipments that may help us reduce the amount of materials that we're using on our roads. So some of that equipment is, we're constantly looking at different types of plow blades, and there's an equipment that's typically used in the Midwest and, and even in Alaska and Canada, but it's called an icebreaker, so we're taking a look at that. And then, of course, we're constantly talking with other cities to see what types of things are, that they're looking at utilizing. We did meet with Redmond last week, actually, and talked about some simulator training. So that's a really great exercise for our crews to do, especially for some of our drivers that may be newer to snow and ice removal. So we're planning, planning that already for the fall. the fall. We are in the process right now, as our snow season is wrapping up, finalizing our budget. So I just would have put caveat out there that these are preliminary numbers. We'll be finalizing those in the next few weeks, and we'll have some final numbers for you when we come back in May to present. But just wanted to take a look at the gray boxes on the upper part of your screen reflects some of the obvious budget categories. You may see snow and ice servicemen. So our supplies, that's our rock salt and our CCB or de-icer. And, excuse me, snow and ice tools, that has shifted more into the fleet budget, but you'll see that come, a little bit comes out of the Public Works budget as well. Our fuel costs over time and other supporting costs are actually a major component of the snow and ice program. But just in the budget books, you'll see that those fuel costs are intended to be fuel for the entire year, not just for snow and ice. So just wanted to put, put that information out there as well. Like I said, we'll come back and make some final numbers. But I think of the biggest thing to take away from this slide is the amount of material used in this last season. So we have spent about 220,000 on raw material alone. So quite a bit, and that, that'll come into play as we figure out our level of service. These are some preliminary options for your consideration, and we'll be back and we'll have more details to provide for you in May. But our option four here is our status quo. Again, we fully service all of our roads in Sammamish. That includes plowing and treating. The other options that we'll be bringing back for your consideration will have some reduced level of service, but what that does is reduce costs and also reduce the amount of a material that we'll be applying on our roads. So when we come back in May, we'll go through the details of each one of these options and their associated costs as well. I think I've kind of covered the next steps. I know we have a lot more on the agenda, but like I said, we'll be back. And I'm so sorry, I'm at stage June. We'll be back on June 13. We'll be working on these in May. And with that, I am open to questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Napuray?
Thank you, Audrey, for this presentation. I have actually been stuck in ice one time when it snowed unexpectedly, so I know how important a role the city plays. One thing I would like to see when you come back to us again is public education around, you know, how to deal with ice, how to drive in ice, you know, as, as we see more and more people in Sammamish are not born in the United States, you know, they come from places where, you know, snow is not present, maybe, or we don't know how to drive in snow, or maybe, you know, just don't know how to even clean the sidewalks and stuff. So I would really like to see some public education part of this. And just, you know, I know in May, when I think we're going to have a Public Works Day, you know, that can be an opportunity to educate others as well. And yeah, so that's my ask.
Thank you. That would be great to do, especially for a reduced level of service, right? So, thank you.
Audrey, are you gonna do drivers' lessons?
Oh, my gosh, no.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. This is great. My request is for us to look at ways to, you know, maintain a certain level of safety, but also reduce the amount of either rock salt or it looks like you were using calcium chloride, which is better for the environment, but still not ideal, especially as we continue to work on, you know, how we protect our fish in Lakes of Mamish, the little red fish. Too much salt, right, can, can have effects. We also got some comments from people concerned about things like the chemicals or the salts on, for their, you know, for pets and stuff when we're out and about. So I'm, I'm open to kind of having conversations about, you know, maybe reducing how much we pre-treat and understanding what the trade-offs there would be. Are there other things we could do instead? Or again, kind of a public education that just says, hey, we're not going to treat these roads when, when there's icing, like, just no. And, you know, when it comes to driving in the snow, I grew up in an area where there was snow, but snow on hills is really different, especially here where we have what we love to call the convergence zones, where we do often get sort of that transitional stuff where it isn't just snow, right? Driving on snow is not so bad. Driving on the slushy stuff that freezes at night is much harder. So I do think a lot of public education would be great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Deputy Mary Lamb?
Hi, Audrey. Thanks for the presentation.
Sure.
So in the past, we haven't had different levels of service. It was just all one level?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Well, I thought this past year's level of service was very good. I really appreciated the updates on social media. I think a lot of people in the community appreciated those too. And I, I think it's great that, that Public Works is, is looking to make continued improvements, even though this year, you know, obviously went pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say yesterday, before I ran into Councilmember O'Farrell at Met, someone came up to me at Met and introduced themselves and said, just wanted to talk about the snow response and how amazing it was that they've lived here for, I don't even know, 13 years, and it was the best they'd ever, like, experienced. So it was just a really weird thing that you're now giving this today. So I also really enjoyed the service, and clearly, we have residents that did as well. And I think we had, like you said, a ton of social media, great responses, really good information coming back. So I don't see other questions except for Scott.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not a question. I want to thank Audrey for bringing this forward. We talked a lot about this. I think this is part of our continued evaluation of what we, you know, how we do service and the cost of that service. So one of, I, I just want to bring this point home a little bit more. I know Audrey put it up on the screen, but we, we spent a lot over this storm season, and that, that level of service, and, and I understand and appreciate people saying how great it is, and I concur, our staff did an amazing job. It does, however, come at a significant cost. And I think that's the piece that we want to try to find, that, that the right spot between that level of service and the cost of that, because we might be in a position to have to come back to council and increase our snow and ice removal budget if we get hit with another set of storms like we did this year. So I just want to bring that point home a little bit more, just to make sure that everyone understands. And part of the reason we're doing this is to, to really find, find the right spot. So.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Audrey. I don't have any other questions, and we will see you after a couple more items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Cool. Thank you. All right. We are back to item number 12. Do I sense a break? Is that, okay. Item number 12. Are you all ready?
We are ready.
Awesome. Okay. So for anyone paying attention, I think we have item 12, 13, and 15 remaining. So I'll pass it to you, David.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. David Pyle, Community Development, back again. Speaking of the convergence zone, Councilmember Stewart, when I arrived here at 6:30 this morning, it was snowing. So don't pack up that equipment quite yet. So with me this evening, I have Lindsay Masters, the Executive Director of Arch, and Elsa Kings with Arch. We're here to talk this evening about the, and also Miriam Leitner, our Planning Manager with the city. So Lindsay, or, excuse me, Miriam serves on the, the Arch Liaisons Group, and I serve on the Arch Executive Board. So we do work closely with Lindsay and Elsa on many issues. Tonight, we have, for your consideration, the Arch Work Plan and Budget as one item, and the Arch Trust Fund Projects List and Authorization as another item. There are two separate resolutions. We could move through the presentation and bundle the presentation together for the purpose of, of, of delivery of the presentation, allow for questions and, and discussion, and then we would have to move, I don't know if we have to move each resolution separately, or if we would then have to, if we could do them together separately. So we'd have to then move each resolution separately in sequence. Great. So we will, I'll go ahead and share my screen here, just a second. And I will turn it over to Lindsay.
Great, thank you. And thanks for having us. It's really nice to be back in person after some time. So I'm going to kick it off and walk you through our annual budget and work program. And then I'm going to hand it over here to Elsa, who's our Housing Trust Fund Manager, to take you through some of the specific funding recommendations for projects this year. And is it okay if I drive? All right. So again, we'll walk you through this current year 2023 budget and work program, talk about some of the additions in this year's budget, also mention some discussion currently underway about next year's budget. And then we'll walk you through kind of just at a high level work program priorities, but happy to also answer questions on the work program if there are any at the end. One thing we wanted to just mention, I slimmed this down a little bit for the presentation, but we did celebrate a 30-year anniversary recently as an organization. Had a great opportunity to reflect back on the last three decades of accomplishments as a coalition. This includes some significant accomplishments in terms of producing affordable housing, but also establishing systems for maintaining and monitoring those units over time, and then really continuing to work closely hand in hand with cities like Sammamish on how do you set future policies to accommodate more affordable housing needs. Diving right into the budget, this year is a continuation of kind of a multi-year phased step in increases in capacity as an organization. Since 2019, roughly, we've identified several areas of needs where we had kind of fallen behind in some of the organizational growth, keeping up with growth in programs. So this year kind of is a culmination of that. We're adding two positions that are allocated across all the member dues. And those, again, are really focused on the program administration and the stewardship of affordable housing that cities are increasingly starting to create through local incentive programs. We also had a robust discussion last year about all of the planning work that is coming up, that cities are having to tackle. And while we didn't want to necessarily decide on creating more staff capacity around planning, we did want to make some one-time funds available to cities through a consulting contract. So that's work that we've have well underway now and are looking forward to having at least a couple of different consultant teams available to cities for their use. The new costs are going to be allocated, as I mentioned, to the base member dues. So those are sort of equally distributed across all the members on a per capita basis. And currently, Sammamish accounts for about 9% of our proposed budget. We are also, because of the cycle of things, discussing at the board level what our 2024 budget recommendation is going to look like. Currently, it's, it's primarily a status quo budget. We're not looking to add more staff, but we have identified a potential need for investing in some legal services. So that might be a somewhat modest increase that comes back next year. The work program remains similar in terms of all the key areas and functions. One new program we've added this year is the Housing Stability Program in Bellevue. That's funded by a dedicated sales tax there. But other areas of the, of the work program remain the same. I have a couple slides to walk through what the board defined as our priorities for this year. And since we're well into the year, I can also talk about how we've started to tackle some of these things. So one is, we do have a goal to provide a housing needs analysis for all of our members. This is something we also did back in 2015, the last time there were a set of comprehensive plan updates. We're just about done wrapping up the data work on that, and are going to make that available to our members. We also plan to do some amount of convening of our members to discuss some of the more recent requirements in GMA, which seem to change every year, new, new things to respond to every year, and sort of pull together some conversations about how cities are defining their strategies for planning for all those needs. We are continuing to collect data so that when you have reporting requirements that are going to be ongoing, you will have sort of us as a backstop to help to pull together a lot of the information you'll need for that reporting. And then we did spend a significant amount of time, both last year and into this year, talking about dedicated revenue proposals. That has led us to be able to do some good work supporting cities in their advocacy for legislative options that are under consideration by the legislature. We are, with the two new positions, expanding our capacity again this year. We've got those recruitments underway and are hoping that those staff positions will be able to be filled by the middle of the year. Continuing on, we, we have, you know, again, new, new incentive programs adopted every year in cities, and so we're trying to keep up by developing compliance tools to keep up with that. We are also taking up a new policy this year to take a look at how affordable rents are increased in affordable housing programs, and hope to come back to member cities with a recommendation on that that could be implemented at the local level. We're also partnering pretty closely with individual cities, and in some cases, with community partners on special projects. We've had a couple of exciting special projects that Elsa's been doing a lot of work on in Kenmore and also in Redmond, and some other projects coming up in other jurisdictions as well. And then finally, this year, we're launching a strategic planning process that is just underway now, that we hope we'll be able to share more about with you next year. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Elsa, and I'll try to move this over so you can take control.
I apologize. So this year, we had our largest funding round, 13.1 million. We were very excited to have six, excuse me, eight applications this year for a total of about $13 million. We had applications in all shapes and sizes, from large, large rehab projects to smaller homes for intellectual and developmental disabilities, and fund requests in various different amounts for a total of 845 units. Out of that tremendous needs and application, we had approximately 7.6 million available for funding. As you can see here, every contribution is extremely important in allowing us to meet our goals and to meet that extreme need that we have for affordable housing. And you see, you can see here the various different contribution from all of our member cities and the various jurisdictions. They're all equally important. We are recommending for your consideration today, seven of those eight projects that apply to us for funding. One of the projects was successful in obtaining additional funding from the state and thus did not want to move forward with their application. Therefore, we are not funding that one. Every single one of these projects that we are recommending to you are incredibly important to us. As you can see here, we are not able to meet all of their requests for funding, just because of the sheer significance of their requests and not having enough funding available. So we are recommending three of those, three of those applications for partial funding. And we'll go through this, the, each of these projects in a minute. As I previously mentioned, all of these projects are all various shapes and sizes. We are extremely excited about the affordability that each one of these projects provides to, and the residents that it serves. All of these projects serve residents at 30% to 80% of area median income. As you can see here, a significant portion of our units are for, for residents at 60% AMI. And equally important is those 30% AMI units. That, but for some additional subsidies, wouldn't be possible, and they serve the most vulnerable of our residents. Each of the, our 7.6 million dollars in funding leverages significantly other funding resources. The total funding for all of these projects was approximately 465 million from, from both The total funding for all of these projects was approximately 465 million from both local and federal sources. As you can see here, for every $1 of Arch funding, and we can leverage that by $40 of additional funding, again, local and federal sources. Most of our funding comes from the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. That is a federal, very successful program. I'm going to very quickly go through the projects next because I do want to give us some time to answer your questions. The Ardell Totem Lake Project is a project in Kirkland that is a partnership between Imagine Housing and TWG. It is the creation of 170 studio and one-bedroom units at 40%, 50%, and 60% AMI. It will be serving seniors and veterans. A very important part of this project is that it is utilizing a property in Kirkland that otherwise would just be an empty parcel, as you can see here. It is very close to various amenities and transit. We are recommending a full award for this project. They requested 1.4 million, and we are recommending that to be fully funded. The Habitat for Humanity Project is the one project that is our homeownership project, extremely important in meeting the homeownership goal that the City of Bellevue Strategic Plan has in place. It is a 25-unit project in the City of Bellevue, excuse me, developed by the Habitat for Humanity through their very successful self-help model. The project will serve residents at 60% and 80% AMI. They have requested 600,000 in funding, and we are recommending the project to be fully The City of Kenmore Supportive Housing Project is one of those projects that Lindsay talked about, the special projects that we have been working on. It is a PSH project in the City of Kenmore, obviously. The project is developed by Plymouth Housing. They have requested approximately $3.2 million, and we are recommending it to be fully funded. It is an extremely important project because this is one of those projects that is serving that very vulnerable population at 30% AMI. It is benefiting from the Section 8 subsidies. And of course, it serves that very vulnerable population of homeless individuals, seniors, and persons with disabilities. Just some additional background on this project. As we mentioned previously, it is one of those special projects that we work with our various member cities and jurisdictions to cultivate partnerships that then become these amazing projects. This property was a city donated land that was underutilized, and the city donated the value of the land of $1.9 million for the creation of this project. They also, in addition, committed $3.2 million of ARPA funding, which was half of their ARPA funding. So extremely committed to the project. In addition, the city has committed to moving the project forward through their permitting process in a very timely fashion. We really wanted to make sure that we got these units on the ground and residents moved in, and so they have committed to move that project through permitting in addition to waiving some other requirements that would allow the project to move forward within the timeframe. One of the most important things about this project is their partnership with the University of Bastille. The university will have a space in the commercial portion of this project in which they'll have a tea house and apothecary, as well as it will be providing some of their services for the residents as well as the members of the community. And this amazing community courtyard into which we envision residents as well as members of the community creating community and congregating with each other. Very exciting. The Kirkland Heights Project is a project in the City of Kirkland. It is a project that is currently owned and currently in the King County Housing Authority portfolio. The Housing Authority is proposing to increase the density in this project by rehabbing a few of the, some of the buildings, as well as creating a few new buildings to increase the density from 180 units to 276 units. We feel like this is a great use of existing property within an agency's portfolio to add additional capacity. The project will be serving residents at 30%, 60%, and 80% AMI. And it will have one, two, and three-bedroom units, so it does benefit from those large, very important three-bedroom units. And it does serve, a majority of their residents are BIPOC households, which is extremely The Inclusion Scattered Homes Project is the acquisition of two homes in the East Side proposed by Inclusion Housing LSC for individuals and, excuse me, and children with intellectual and developmental disabilities. They are proposing to, as I previously said, acquire two homes, yet to be determined where their location will be. One of the homes will be serving children's ages 18 to 21, and the other home will be serving adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The project has requested 400,000 in funding, and we are recommending this project to be fully funded. And I apologize, if I could just go back to the previous slide, there was one point that I forgot to make about the Kirkland Heights Project. The project requested $2 million in funding. We are recommending approximately 1.5 million in funding. This is one of those projects in which we are just, for no other reason, we feel like the project is incredibly important and it is a great use of their property, but we just don't have enough funding to be able to fully fund at the amount that they requested. I apologize for the deviation. Moving on to the Spring District TOD Project. Again, this is one of those projects that is extremely important. It is in the City of Bellevue. It is extremely strategically important just for various reasons. One of the, it is a project that the City of Bellevue has been working on with, in partnership with Arch for a while. It is located strategically located in a very important Spring District neighborhood of the city next to the Sound Transit Operations and Maintenance Facility. The project is an incredible mixed-use, excuse me, component. It'll have an incredibly big mixed-use component in which two of those buildings, Building Three and Building Six, will be affordable housing buildings within a larger component of mixed-use office space as well as market-rate residential buildings. The project will have a significant amount of units. 235 units are proposed, including studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedroom units, which is quite an array, quite a mix of different sizes. And it will be serving residents at 40%, 50%, and 60% AMI, which includes families as well as individuals. So the project is planned to start construction in November of 2024. Thus, when the Bridge Housing requested $4 million in funding, again, going back to that need and the availability that we have, we felt like we want to make a contribution to this project, even though it's not starting construction for a while. It is incredibly important to us. However, we're not able to fund it fully funded at $4 million. So we are making a recommendation of $350,000 for this great mixed-use community. The Attane Sixplex Project is a smaller project within the City of Kirkland. The developer and applicant is Attane Housing. They are requesting $750,000 for the new construction of six-bedroom, excuse me, six-unit, two-bedroom triplex in which, sixplex, in which they will be serving transitional, they will be serving residents at 30% AMI, and it'll be transitional housing for those homeless families. It is a great use of existing vacant, underutilized land within two buildings that they currently This project, again, is one of those that we feel is incredibly important for various reasons. One of, because it is increasing the capacity of Attane Housing by those six-bedroom units within their portfolio. It's also utilizing underutilized space, but it is also serving those very vulnerable residents. We are recommending this project for funding $50,000, mostly to allow Attane Housing just additional funding to be able to provide more clarity in regards to permitting and other predevelopment requirements that they will need in order to obtain additional funding from the state and possibly even King County. We want to make sure that we provide technical assistance to allow Attane Housing to be successful in obtaining that leverage funding that is so important to move these projects With that, I will go ahead and turn it over for questions.
Councilmember Howell.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and for the materials. It's very helpful to understand all the projects you guys are working on. And thanks also, I mean, I asked a bunch of questions earlier and I got responses back. It's very helpful. I have a question about the projects. In terms of, as I look through these, and I'll see that, for example, that if I look at the status of a project, I'll see that certain funds are committed and others are proposed. And so I'm trying to understand exactly what that means. Like, for example, if it's proposed, I'm assuming that that is not a complete amount or it's not a for-sure amount. And when I see that, I wonder, well, how often do these projects actually not come to fruition? How often do they actually not go forward? Because I see committed, and then I think, well, you know, like, you're not able to fund to the level that you would love to be able to, and I would imagine that that's not an unusual position to be in. So how many of these projects that you've identified are actually going to happen and by when? And is it anything that you have any insight into?
Yeah. And please add on, so the chart Elsa presented that had all of the different funding sources that represents a lot of those that our projects go on to seek after Arch commits funding. Typically, we are one of the first funding sources committed to a project, and other funders really like to see local support before they will come forward and make a commitment themselves. So most often, we see things at the point where the other funding is just proposed. There are some times where, for example, a project is coming to us for a second time, and they've had some time to secure other funding, or it is their own agency resources that they're committing. So those, sometimes we will see funding sources that are already committed. But typically, we are that most important pivotal commitment, and we actually have a role in helping them to secure and advocate for the other funding sources. So we really like to be confident in a project before we make that commitment that they're going to be able to be successful. But we do have also a lot of funding conditions that attach to our award that makes sure we're not expending any of our funds until all those other resources are secured.
That's, yeah, I just wanted to kind of make sure I understood that part of it. Yeah, I think it's, I can understand the need to have someone that has a reputation such as Arch, for example, to be that first dollars in, so that others have confidence to put their dollars in as well. So I appreciate the fact that your reputation precedes you and allows for the other monies to come in. That's my question right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you for a great presentation. One, I want to give a huge shout out to Kenmore, right? Contributing all of their ARPA funds to affordable housing, like, good on them. That's amazing. One question I had, when you showed the funding from the different cities, how is the amount of funding per city determined? Just looking at how much each city is contributing, if you could go back to that slide.
Yeah, it's back here. So this reflects what's in cities' current accounts, their account balances, and those accumulate over time based on what every city decides each year to contribute. It's unlike the, kind of that member dues and the operating budget. You can put in as little or as much as you like as a city each year, so it's part of your annual budget deliberations, what you're going to plan to contribute.
Interesting. It would be great, I would love to see kind of on a per capita basis what the various cities are, so we get a sense if we're contributing an appropriate amount. Because it feels like maybe we're not, but I don't want to make any assumptions. I mean, I'm doing the math in my head, I know, but...
So if you may recall, as part of the budget process, we went through one of the pieces of information that was provided, I think it was the parity analysis around per capita spending for housing trust fund. And it is a fact that Sammamish does come up short with regard to our trust fund contribution related to our population, if you were to use that as the factor in your parity analysis.
And then this is just the actual dollars, right, that cities contribute. It's not even accounting for, say, like, the time that Kirkland or Bellevue or Kenmore are contributing from their staff when they do projects, right? Because that's probably an additional cost that cities may take on when they're assisting with projects.
They waive permit fees in some cases.
There's a mix, there's a mix of policies on that.
So a city may choose to waive permit fees as part of processing for one of these projects that they're pursuing within their jurisdictional boundary. For example, Kenmore might want to choose to waive its permit fee and expedite the project, which would then be an in-kind contribution.
All right, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
Hi, thank you for the presentation and for all the great work that you're doing here regionally. I had a couple of questions. The first one is our member dues are $171,000, and you'll be doing a lot of work for us, assisting us with our housing needs analysis, our housing action plan. How does that, like, break out? Like, how do you determine how to allocate those funds? Like, is it on a per hourly basis? It says you'll help us and you'll assist us in doing all these things, but I'm not sure how the hours or, like, how you allocate that $171,000 over all those things.
I can take a stab at trying to answer that.
I'm only asking because typically when we see, you know, we have an item that's budgeted, and I'll see something where, like, each person is assigned a dollar value, and this is how many hours that they're going to work on it.
So in the more detailed budget, it's, it kind of will, it will reflect, here's all the expenses that go into the administrative budget, and then here's the distribution. So the expenses themselves include all the staff positions that pertain to each area of the work program. So we could, you know, do a calculation that sort of looks at how many FDEs are in which part of the program, what that breaks out to, and then get more detailed about how much time is spent with each jurisdiction. It gets somewhat challenging to show that breakdown because, for example, something like the trust fund, there's staff allocated to the trust fund, and it benefits all the members that contribute to the trust fund. It's not really possible to break it down city by city. Similar things could be said of sort of other parts of the work program that really cover the whole region. But we'd be happy to provide more, kind of more detail if you'd like following the meeting, if that'd be helpful.
I was just curious, I don't know if, David, you had anything to add to it since you work with Lindsay a lot?
Yeah, so from my angle, it's really broken down into function. Like, what is the, what is the, what is the staff function, and what is the budget support in terms of function? There are two fundamental buckets that I see from the outside of Arch, and that is continuing to manage and ensure that units that are brought into the system that are affordable remain affordable. And that is a huge body of work. Following up on covenants, watching properties flip in ownership, making sure that when new properties are brought into the mix, that we have the right documentation in place. Because if you don't have the right covenant in place... Because if you don't have the right covenant in place, it's really hard to enforce it going forward. So that's one bucket. The other bucket is in terms of advocacy and assistance in helping cities navigate the world of, of housing. We, we are not, if you look at the, the makeup of the, of the partner cities, not all of those cities have the staffing capacity to be experts in housing. So we definitely rely on Arch to support us and to answer questions and to pick up the phone, and they do pick up the phone when we call. Usually, we're, we're in a crisis mode and we're needing to find an answer very quickly, and they are very supportive of that. I would also say that, that part of it is the continuity in keeping projects that are being brought online through the trust fund contribution moving, moving along. It's that, that, having that advocate there to keep the project going and to help see it to completion. And if it's faltering for some reason, to try and understand why and try and give it some support and nurturing that it might need to keep going. So between all those, those are the fundamental categories. Then there's also the very important work of feeding the board. The board is a very needy, needy body and needs a lot of information. And we have lots of meetings and I'm sure the staff are very busy always producing packets for, for the board, much like what we do for you, you know, you're, it's a, it's a, it's a full-time job. So that's where I see the, the city's contribution going and generally how I see it broken down. I do note that there is an uptick in forecasted cost just by way of cost of living adjustment because they are under the umbrella of Bellevue and Bellevue does identify what their, I guess, COLA adjustment will be every year. They have a different formula than we use and that's already been written into our budget. So although we have 170-something for, for '23, I believe it goes up to 184 or something like that for '24. So we've already written that into our two-year budget cycle.
Okay, thank you for that. So it sounds like it's just one giant bucket, basically, and it's really hard to define, you know, what goes where.
Harder.
Okay, harder. My other question is, I was just looking at the different projects and I kind of started looking at the construction costs for some of the new units. And they vary anywhere from $300 to $800 a square foot. Is there, like, a target number you guys try to strive for? Because they seem, it does seem like a really wide range. And like Plymouth, I think, was up at 800 and there was another one that was at 300. So a huge range.
I will try to take a stab at answering that without being too technical in my answer. There are various reasons why those units' costs are different. It, anywhere from the size of, the bedroom size, the size of the project, the density of the project. A more dense project is probably going to be more cost-efficient. Specifically for the Kenmore project, that is one of those projects that serves a very vulnerable population and as such requires additional services to make sure that we have a project that will fully meet the needs of those residents. It could be that sometimes a project has different amenities, again, to meet the needs of the residents. And also, there are varying factors, even within the market, anywhere from a rise in interest rates, as we're seeing now, to, to labor increases and et cetera. Yes, in particular, this project is, will be paying Davis Bacon prevailing wages, which added an increase in cost of approximately $1.5 million for this project. And that is due to the Section 8 funding, the federal funding sources that are required for this project. So different requirements also contribute to that increase in cost.
And this is just strictly based on square footage, right? All that factors in, just the square footage? Like, we're not talking about financing or anything like that?
Correct, financing does sometimes play into the various different costs. Again, a, a project with higher interest rates could be that, of course, has that increased cost. Some of these projects that, that possibly are larger, maybe benefit from self-financing, wouldn't have those costs, but the square foot, that would play into the square footage of them.
Okay, I guess I'm just not clear, because I see the projects, they're broken out in terms of the line items. There's acquisition costs, construction financing, permanent financing, soft costs. And then construction costs, like, based on square footage, there's just a wide range. So I guess I, I'm still not clear as to why there's such a, like, range in costs.
The discrepancy even within the construction. Again, some of those reasons are the various labor costs, the wages that we're paying for each project as well as the sizes of the projects.
A little bit more. To give kind of the Plymouth project as an example, those are all small units. Smaller units have less square footage to spread the costs around. So it has sort of some of the same fixed costs as a larger unit, but much less square feet to spread it across. So those tend to have higher per-square-foot costs. Also, because it's a supportive housing project, as Elsa mentioned, there's a lot of common areas for providing services and gathering residents. So that also tends to increase the per-square-foot cost of those projects. The Davis Bacon is just the cherry on top because there are commercial wage rates that typically residential projects wouldn't have to pay. But because of the funding involved, this project is required to pay higher wage rates than, than other projects. So there's, that's an example of, you know, a few different factors that would make one project at a higher end in terms of its construction cost compared to a very different kind of project.
So just, just in terms of construction, and I don't know the formula that's used there to generate the, the square footage cost, but just in terms of construction, if you're factoring in construction type, site work, the existing condition, all of those things vary from project to project. And that can be a significant cost or a very low cost depending on the project. For example, the KCHA project is already developed. They already have utilities, they already have the, the site grade, everything's already done. And they may be actually, I don't know to what degree, salvaging the existing structures and repurposing those, which would bring the construction cost down in some cases. Versus a new building where they're, they're starting from scratch and they're having to do all of their site work in addition to the building and the finishing and everything that goes along with it. That, that would be a variable cost there as well. That's just speaking generally in terms of, of different projects that we see here in the city and the type, and the costs as I understand them.
Okay, great, thank you. That's very helpful.
All right, I don't see another hands. So I think we'll go ahead and make this motion and then move to the next if that's right, since we have two separate resolutions. Is that good? Cool, all right, Councilmember O'Farrell?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion approving the 2023 Budget and Work Plan Program for Regional Coalition for Housing, Arch.
Second. Oh, yep, so many seconds. Sorry, Miriam, did you have something before we, yeah?
Sorry, dear. Thank you. I just wanted to say the Housing Trust Fund resolution, I believe, might need to be adjusted because it does include the one project that withdrew their application. So we'll need a little bit more information from Arch on how that, that pot of money is going to be reallocated. Because right now, it's referring to the memo and it's including that as one of the projects that's funded.
Where was it? In the attachments? Friends of Youth, the Friends of Youth project? What we would be doing is striking the Friends of Youth, the Landing Shelter and Service Center project in Kirkland from the resolution.
All right, thank you so much, Miriam, for catching that.
David, that's in Section 1 of the, of the ordinance of the resolution. Sorry, is this a resolution?
Yeah, so Section 1 includes the name and then Section 2 is referring to the attachment. So we'll probably need to adjust the attachment. I think it's Attachment 1, just to make things extra confusing of the attachments that's referenced there, which shows where Sumamish is allocating its funding. I hope that made sense.
It would be, it would be removing the Friends of Youth, the Landing Shelter project on page 2 of, apologies, Attachment 1 that is referenced in the resolution.
Okay, so I think Councilmember Train is going to make an amendment to the resolution. Carrie, does that?
I was going to ask the attorney if we needed to make an amendment or if this would just be a Scribner-type of adjustment by administration.
Can I just clarify? I made the resolution for item number 12 as opposed to item number 13.
What I'm, what I'm hearing here is that we might have a different memo that, a different generation here. So, our bad. What we could do is we could suspend this tonight, bring it back on consent at the next meeting, given that they're, we're at the point where it's really just an accounting issue and make sure we've got the right memo in there.
To Councilmember O'Farrell's point, though, her motion was to approve the Budget and Work Plan. And I think what you're talking about is the other resolution.
Got it, so we could continue with the Budget and Work Plan item.
Yes, yeah.
But, but then...
I messed up, too, yeah.
Suspend the other one, yeah.
Okay, all right, so it's been seconded, I think, Councilmember Nupure, maybe second, or? Okay, all right, so all in favor of approving item number 12, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. And then, do you have a presentation for the second piece, the 13? Or was that all in?
It was all together, yeah.
I want another one, yeah, okay.
But what I did want to say is, thank you for your patience on the, on the second resolution regarding the Housing Trust Fund. We want to make sure we've got it right, that, you know, there's a lot of things that happened in the moment here. One other thing I wanted to point out and take this moment of opportunity is, as we walked through the list of projects that, that were, we were approving as part of the Housing Trust Fund expenditure, you saw many projects that were really good examples of some of the projects we've been talking about with our comprehensive plan update. Given that a majority of our housing allocation is in the 0% to 30%, and also includes permanent supportive housing, the, the Kenmore example is a really classic mid-rise example that includes 0% to 30% permanent supportive housing. There was also an example in Bellevue of a church property that was being used for habitat cottages. That, those are the, the bonus parcels that we were calling them as part of our presentation. So if we, if, as we progress, these are some projects that we could ask for some additional information on and use as examples to try and get a better understanding around what it ultimately looks like on the ground and how that might fit into our community.
That's awesome. Uh, Councilmember Nupure?
Yeah, I just want to thank Arch again for coming in and doing this presentation. I think, again, just generally, I know in the past, I think, David, when, when I was on the planning commission, we used to have more presentations, it felt like. I would be really curious about the rubric that you use, you know, when you award these grants, for the lack of a better word, to, to projects. Because I think that would really help us understand, because I think there was a few questions that you guys, like, why this project versus that, right? So it would be great to see that rubric. Also, I, I didn't see on your website, but I'm sure you do, you know, what sort of, what do you do on the, with legislators to, you know, get either funding or just sort of advocate for low-income housing? I'm sure you do that, I didn't see it very specifically on the website. And then again, how do you reach out to more sort of diverse populations within, you know, King County? Again, new immigrant populations, you know, refugees who are coming into this area? How are you doing that outreach? I would be just very curious to know and eager to learn about that.
We're really excited, too, that one of the two new positions that we approved for this year will be able to expand some of our outreach specifically so that we can bring all the affordable housing opportunities that are being created to more diverse populations. So we've been really excited about that, too, and excited to have the support to create more capacity on that front.
I think that's also a really great prompt for part of our strategic planning effort, to consider that as well as Arch, you know, how does Arch promote that and, and work in the communities to ensure we're, we're doing adequate outreach and reaching groups that we might not otherwise reach.
Great, well, thank you both for being here. And thank you to Miriam and David for liaisoning and boarding for Arch, too. That's awesome.
And we will be back on consent with, with the, with the Trust Fund resolution.
Okay, and that's Resolution 2023-1008 is coming back next week, or no, week, two weeks, May 2nd.
Next meeting.
Next meeting on consent, great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, so let's take five while we switch to item number 15 and bring Audrey, Lindsay, and Doug back. Does that sound good? All right, five minutes. All right, welcome back. So next up, we have item number 15, the overview of Plan to Adopt 2024-29 Transportation Improvement Plan and Revenue Assumptions. I will pass it on to, I think Audrey can probably get started. Unless you needed Scott to kick anything off, he's just not back yet. All right, all right, Audrey's up.
Okay. Good evening again. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and City Manager, for the record, Audrey Sarsky, Interim Public Works Director. This evening, the Transportation Planning Division of Public Works will be providing an overview of the 2024 through 2029 Transportation Improvement Plan process. This presentation this evening is meant to be an introduction. It is the first of several meetings in the next few months. And presenting this evening is our transportation planner, Lindsay Channing, and Doug McIntyre, our Senior Transportation Planning Manager. And I will both be available for questions throughout the presentation as well. And Lindsay, whenever you are ready, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Audrey. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. So thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening and give you a overview of our presentation. So first, I'd like to start off by just showing that the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan, is part of our Annual Work Plan Program. You'll see it's listed here under the 2023 Transportation Planning Items. I'd also like to point out that this may be a little different from last year, and I'll get into more details around that. But for this sake, we are back to calling it the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan. Last year, we had called it the Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. And that is not consistent with how it is described in RCW 3577. So we have been advised by our legal team that we should go back to referring to it as the TIP. And because of that, that is exactly what we are doing this year. This evening, we want to go over a little bit around the background and purpose of what the TIP is, what's new, revenue assumptions, prioritization, upcoming important dates, and then have a discussion at the end and address any questions you all may have. I would like to say that as far as what's new, we're pretty excited that we're moving forward with a reformatting of what the TIP will look like this year. We have plans on having it be more similar to what you saw with the Stormwater Capital Improvement Program. So you'll have the spreadsheet list of the projects and programs and the dollar amounts associated with that. But we're also going to be putting, or we are currently working on putting together a project and program document that gives more detailed information on all of those projects and programs. And you'll be seeing all of this in May. We also have, we'll be linking it back to our comprehensive plan goals and council goals within that programs and plan document. And another very exciting thing that Audrey has spearheaded for the city is a GIS mapping tool that will show all of the capital projects throughout the city and give opportunities for interaction, clicking on one, getting information about them, and then linking back to that project or programs webpage within the city website as well. So we're hopeful that that will be operational, at least by the time that we adopt the TIP at the end of June. I'd like to use this graphic to just kind of describe a little bit of how important the TIP is within our Public Works Department and for the city. So, the very top of this chart, we've got comprehensive plan and the city council goals, and we really see those as going hand in hand with each other and really giving the direction on how various departments move forward with our projects and just the way we do business. We also have our citywide capital facilities plan, as you know, we'll be working, starting work later this summer on our Long Range System Completion Plan, which will also be our 20-year project list, we're very excited to get going on that, as we've not had an updated one in quite some time. We've also kicked off our transit plan, and we also have regional projects that we may wish to participate in, and all of these things can be inputs and help inform the Transportation Improvement Program. And then when we have a TIP, that allows us to be eligible for certain grant funding opportunities, and our TIP is also used at PSRC level to help inform state and regional transportation improvement programs. So all of this kind of wraps up into an illustration of how we can get to project implementation and the importance of the TIP for the city. Oops, a little too fast there. Also, in addition to the TIP helping us get to project implementation, we are required to adopt a six-year comprehensive TIP pursuant to RCW 3577-010. It is a planning-level document, so it doesn't establish expense authority, and it's, it's really a guiding document for us to give us kind of the roadmap for moving forward on projects that are attainable for us in the next six-year period. We do have a current TIP that was adopted in July of 2022, and that, the 2023-2028 TIP.
Hey Lindsay, real quick, it looks like the slide hasn't advanced.
Oh, my apologies. Thank you.
Oh, no, yeah, there you go.
So, I explained this, but here it is visually for everyone to see, but I'll move on unless I need to cover something, again, we can come back to it. This 12-month cycle is something that I know you all saw going through the TIP process last year, but I think that it's really, gives a good visual on how capital project planning works cyclically through the city for the year. So, you know, August to December, we have our budgeting process, then we go into reviewing our data, we get our traffic counts in that March-April timeframe, we begin our TIP planning, we actually began that a little bit earlier this year, which is great, gives us a little bit of a head start, and we can come to you and flush these things out to the TIP planning, really could be April to June, May to June for certain, and then we do the public hearing and adoption process in June, and then it is required to be submitted to WASDOT, Washington State Department of Transportation, on July 1st of every year, and then we can start over discussing the citywide needs and then back into the budget cycle, so this is something that we look at every year. So the purpose of the TIP is four main items, the first being transparent investments in the system, so this provides transparency to the community so that we can show how the city intends to invest in our transportation system for the near term. We also use this document to identify solutions to our system needs, so how we can address and remedy concurrency failures, make safety improvements, address non-motorized transportation issues, and also complete feasibility studies for larger projects, so we can move those forward as well. We also use the TIP to outline timeframes for estimated project completion, so it gives a general timeframe during which these projects can occur, and then within that, we assign estimated costs and expenditures to each project by year. And then we also prioritize projects, so the prioritization is based on a set of criteria and a scoring matrix. This year, as I stated at the beginning of this presentation, we are kind of revamping and reorganizing how we're presenting the TIP, and that includes our project categorization this year, so our project categories this year include citywide programs, corridor projects, traffic safety and non-motorized projects, regional, excuse me, regional projects and unfunded future projects. This allows for us to address the things that I stated from the last slide, but that included affordability or financial constraints and the reasonable assurances for financial commitments in this 2024-2029 TIP. It's really key for us to approach this from the perspective that all the projects within the city that are on this list can realistically be delivered in a six-year window, and the ones that cannot get categorized in that unfunded future project category. So moving on to revenue assumptions, we wanted to be really clear this year and be really realistic and reasonable as to kind of what our baseline is, and taking that from the 340 Fund, which is the Transportation Capital Improvement Fund that Public Works has, we really have two main sources of reasonable revenue to use for the 2024 and 2029 TIP, and that's the traffic impact fees and the REIT, the real estate excise tax. Both of these are averaged for this, for the purposes of this estimation over six-year time period. So with our traffic impact fees, as of the beginning of April this year, we had roughly 8.6 million in the fund, and it's estimated that another roughly 5.6 million would come in over the next six years. The same with REIT, that also, we have historically, in the last six or six to 10 years, have had an annual roughly to use for planning purposes, so there are 32,300,000 as our, as kind of our baseline number for assumptions on this. There are other sources that can be considered, but those sources will require policy decisions. These will be included in our scenarios that we present to council when we come back in May for our workshop. So as far as how we move forward with our assumptions, one, we want to prioritize the work, and then we will move into the funding and the scenario building, so that baseline scenario will have the REIT and TIF, and then scenarios two and three will have other potential funding sources, and there is a typo on the slide, I apologize, but those other potential funding sources could include storm utility funds, various grants that we have been awarded, and also some general fund. And this will be a big part, we anticipate, of the conversations we'll be having during the workshop in May. So moving on to prioritization, we have, last year, through resolution, adopted some prioritization criteria to utilize for the, for the TIP. It had weighted scores, and we use this for all of the projects last year. This year, we're looking for a head nod from council because it is what we're referring to within Public Works, a bridge year for us, because we have so many different large policy plans and documents that we're working on collectively through the city, such as the comprehensive plan, our Long Range System Completion Plan, and that updated 20-year list, for example, the transit plan. We really just need to keep our TIP current and moving forward, and then it'll get readjusted once we have those other long-range plans completed. And this being a bridge year, and the time constraints of having to have the TIP sent to WASDOT by July 1st, we are proposing and looking for a head nod from council that we do not include community input as a criteria for the methodology of prioritization this year on our projects. So what that would mean is that we would go back through all of the projects that were scored last year, and we would, we would take out the community character scoring within our documentation, and then the new projects that have been, are proposed to be added to the TIP this year would be scored with the same criteria, that way it's a level playing field, if you will, for the prioritization methodology across the board on the projects and programs within the TIP this year. The 20-year system, or, excuse me, the Long Range System Completion Plan and the 20-year list will have quite a bit of in-depth community input and public participation throughout the whole process, and we will be putting together a recommended prioritization methodology to go along with that as well, and once we get that work started this summer. So as I mentioned, we do have some dates coming up that we're anticipating coming back to council, May 9th would be at the study session, would be the workshop on the project list, the product
It hasn't advanced again.
Not advancing, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, Doug. So, May 9th would be council study session for the workshop on the project list, our project prioritization classifications, and our draft TIP. And then we would come back at your regular meeting on June 6th and discuss the draft TIP and how, conduct the public hearing on our TIP, and then come back on June 20th for TIP adoption. So with that, we are proposing that the next steps and continued steps by staff are to review and discuss the input that we received this evening from council and adjust as needed, we'll continue to work with our CIP engineering and traffic engineering teams to refine our projects lists, we, meeting with them pretty regularly throughout this whole process, we're a pretty tight-knit group that has really good communication and a lot of team effort goes into this redevelopment that we're doing this year. And then, we're also working very closely with our finance department to refine the financial data, such as revenue, and make sure that we're providing the most accurate information as possible, and then we'll conduct that workshop in May, hold the public hearing, gather the public testimony, adjust as necessary, and then adopt the TIP and transmit it to WASDOT at the end of June. So with that, that concludes my presentation this evening, and I ask if anyone has any questions. I will go ahead and stop sharing my screen so that we can see everyone, but I'm more than happy to bring the presentation back up if necessary.
Councilmember Nupure.
Thank you Lindsay, Audrey, and Doug for this presentation. I think when you, when you come back for, you know, in May and bring the list of projects, I think I would still like you to just give a 101 on how we come up with these projects, who funds them. I think typically, you know, when we do have that, the, the impact fees, you know, for newer development, it's assumed that, oh, that's going to pay for all these improvements along the way, and as, as we all know, there have been projects which have been on our TIP for years and years and years, which have just not happened, and I think it's a fair question that everybody has, is like, why, why has that happened, right? So, just sort of to start us off on that, I think it would be great next time when you come along, just like a 101. And then what I'm also curious about is when, how are the post-pandemic more remote work, how has that affected our, you know, just commute patterns, and what is going to be the impact of that on this TIP, right? Because it's, it's a significant, a significant impact, but I would just like to understand if it's going to influence, and if there are any other sort of considerations that we need to take into account when we start, you know, bringing up projects on TIP.
We can certainly include that, Councilmember Nupure, thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Doug and Lindsay, I just had a question just toward the end of the presentation. Lindsay, you had mentioned due to your staff workload and all the various plans we're trying to get out at the end of this year, about skipping, and forgive me if I didn't hear properly, where we would look for public comment and kind of skipping a step in that, and usually that's not something I'm a big fan of, can you just explain that again? What, what, what are you proposing again with that?
Sure, I'll take a stab at it, and Audrey might want to jump in, but what we're proposing is to use the prioritization methodology that was adopted under resolution last year, but not scoring the community input line for each of the projects, so taking that out as a scoring criteria, and well, that will mean that all of the projects that had a score last year will deduct what the community input score was, so that the new projects this year that are added to the list will be scored at the same weight level as the projects from previous years, and then when we go forward with the Long Range System Completion Plan, we'll have proposed new prioritization methodology, and then all of the projects will be scored, again, at that time for the 20-year list. Throughout the Long Range System Completion Plan, there'll be lots of opportunity for community input, additional community input, and so, due to time constraints and the small number of additional projects being added this year, we're asking for a head nod from council to omit the community input as a criteria for project prioritization scoring.
So, but, sorry Doug, so the community will still have an opportunity in '24 to give input on the list of projects that we're, we're proposing to put on the TIP, and so they won't, the public, just so I'm clear, won't miss out on an opportunity to give their opinion on what we potentially may work on and put on the TIP and maybe fund, am I right in saying that?
Correct, it would just occur through the Long Range System Completion Plan, which is a larger list than the six-year TIP is.
If I may just add a bit of clarification as well, the resolution that was adopted last year was very specific to last year's TIP, or as it was called T-SIP last year, and so, we are proposing to use that same methodology for this year's TIP, but just, as Lindsay noted, simply removing that input line for all other future years, and actually starting this year, as we work on the transportation elements, the Long Range System Completion Plan, all of these other very large planning efforts, we would bring back some, some scoring methodology that would be a little bit more concrete for council to consider, that would be applicable for all of those planning efforts. So, next year, when we're preparing the TIP, the TIP, that list just comes from our 20-year project list, so that, in a way, that, that gap is bridged, if you will.
I can add a piece of context here, which is that what we did last year, which again, to Audrey's point, was very specific to that, that T-SIP, was we reused a lot of the, and we explained this back in April and May of 2022, that we had reused the TMP methodology for prioritizing projects, partly for time efficiency, and that had a really large component of community outreach and community input, and so that data was from 2019 and 2020, and so now that we're a few years out, it's, it's less relevant, and so I think that that's, plays into the, the reasonings for wanting to not use that this year and instead focus on the future for the Long Range System Completion Plan and the COP Plan and those other really heavy policy documents that will have a lot of community outreach.
Scott, go for it.
Excuse me, thank you Mayor, if I could, excuse me, I just wanted to, I'm not, I don't want to pile on here, but I want to be clear, since we had some council members that weren't involved last year because they weren't on council yet, just to be clear that really what this is saying is, for an individual project, we're not scoring that extra piece of criteria, however, the entire process is available for public comment, and we are obviously going to take public comment at the study session and at your council meetings as part, and as part of the public hearing required to adopt the Transportation Improvement Plan. So I think that was a piece that was, to me, was a little bit, I wanted to clarify, to pull those pieces out, we were bringing in prior public comment on individual projects last year, and we have, we've added some projects based on moving forward that we haven't had a chance to do that with, so in order to level the playing field, we are recommending pulling that piece out. So I just wanted to clarify, because I do recognize that a couple of council members came in at the very tail end of this process and didn't have the possibility to hear all the conversation that went on, and we slow-walked this last year and spent a lot of time on it, even Councilmember Stewart dropped in in the middle of it, so, I know it's been, there's a little bit of a learning curve here, and I appreciate that, so thank you to the team for- Um so I, I know it's been, there's a little bit of a learning curve here and I appreciate that. So thank you to the team for bringing all this forward.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
So what I think would be really helpful for me and I'm sure with all, with the other council members is to have more information on the traffic counts. I know we're just winding down and gathering all the data, but when I think about last year, um. It seemed like we got the information, but we didn't have, like, um it didn't come back to us in a council meeting. Or it would have been really helpful to have small groups um on that, just because these numbers are so important. We're coming out of the pandemic and these numbers are in some ways gonna um kind of show what the trend is going to be like. So I think this year um having um a deeper dive into the traffic counts would be really helpful.
Councilmember Stuart.
Yeah, thank you. Um thank you, Deputy Mayor. I do think it's important. I know when I went through the numbers last year. There are changing traffic patterns, right? Like the midday counts were higher, but so a many of the peak, I would say all of the peaks were lower. Um because I think with more people working from home, you have more people kind of going out for lunch, maybe. Or driving around in the middle of the day than we've had in the past, but not as many necessarily participating in the, in the commute. So it, I think it is important to really look at those numbers. Um and uh we probably um need to also add to this when we look at traffic counts. We made a change that is, I think, a little bit unorthodox. When we look at peak numbers. We made our peak number variable, right? So typically, as I understand it. A peak traffic count, you pick a peak hour for AM and PM and you say, what's the peak at, you know, between seven and eight AM and five and six PM or whatever. Number we pick, we, we chose the peak number is the peak number. So if this road or intersection had a peak at seven thirty, that was the peak hour. But if this road had it at nine, we said that's the peak. And so we didn't really have a, a system peak hour. We had an individual, you know, uh corridor roadway or intersection peak. And I, I don't know if we want to stick with that. I don't know how that plays into, if at all. Um into your sort of system efficiency scoring. So it might be interesting to um kind of help us understand that as well. Um and then I would just like, when you come back, uh you had some, you know, financial estimates and you had a lot of averages. I'd just like to understand like what were, how many, what were the years that you used for those averages? Um and I'm assuming as we move forward, those high-level sort of brush strokes will get a little more refined. Like when I think about REIT, um you know, we definitely had a change in the housing market this year from last year. So making sure that while we look at averages, we also maybe put a little bit of. You know, what do we think is actually going to happen in the next year or two with higher interest rates and things? So we don't. Um overestimate any of our um revenue assumptions. Thanks.
Awesome. Um and so you're just looking for head nods, not an official motion to remove that item, that one scoring criteria? Can you see us not our heads?
Yes.
Or Scott can. I am nodding. I think it looks like we have some consensus, yeah.
I'm seeing nodding and Mayor, I think what um it will be fo- formalized when the final uh TA, uh transportation improvement plan comes to council for adoption. So this is for planning purposes at the moment and then we'll formalize that with the actual resolution.
Awesome. So then we'll see you back uh May ninth? Is that the study session, I think, for it?
That's correct, Mayor, and we'll have a few, um the project lists and a few scenarios, um draft scenarios for council to consider in May as well.
Awesome, yeah. Thank you all. And um, yeah, I think the only other thing I was thinking, if that is a head nod to remove. I don't know how much, I think it's just one X, like, like that one line. So I don't know how much that would actually, if that, if anything falls off. The list, I'd be curious, but um it's not like it's one of the three X ones, so. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Have a good evening.
Alrighty. Okay, uh I will open it up for council reports. I don't think we had any written, typed, anything. Nobody? If we approved both, oh, go ahead.
Uh, well, you were there.
Yeah, we approved both policies, was it a?
It was a, yes.
I remember how they were called.
It was actually board training and bor, and board um. Uh just deportment, just have, you know, our rules of conduct.
Yep, and we had an emergency management presentation.
Yeah, the, the emergency management uh presentation, I'm, I'm hoping to get in writing. And actually, Scott, I'm looking for some direction on that because I, I mean, I did a, a side conversation with folks there. But would you prefer that I go to Mark? Or, or do you, do you want me to just do it? Do, how do you want me to do that?
You, you're welcome to um work through me and I'll, I can work with Mark on that.
Okay, okay, great. Because I know that he's working on the equivalent of the emergency management comprehensive plan. And um I'd love to know how that process is going and just uh is he getting the support he needs? And uh Andrew has hired a couple of people who look great as far as just a little bit of background on their. Um it's the wildfire and um emergency management perspective and that, you know, it's clear they're get, they're getting ramped. My concern is that they're getting ramped. I mean, their deadline is end of year. And I struggle with that because we were going to be hitting summer before we hit end of year. So um where, where there's an opportunity. To have um something in advance that's um more tangible, that would be great.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Lamb.
So I attended the uh PIC, the Public Issues Committee uh meeting uh last week and um we had. Um a couple of issues that we discussed. There was the veteran senior um levy renewal. And uh there were a few cities that did not support it. Um they're, um you know, as you know, we're, the current. Issue on the ballot is the crisis center levy and they're concerned about um voter fatigue. And that the veteran senior levy renewal will not pass due to the one that's currently on the ballot. Um there's the wastewater restructuring, uh King County wastewater uh restructuring rate hike. And um I reached out to Samamish Plateau Water and that was something they did not support. Um they believe that uh King County needed to do, that the, the, the modeling that they did for that rate restructure. Um our numbers in Samamish and how we um came up with those numbers are different than um King County's. It's a math equation, which I can't explain right now. Um and the, I think that was it. Thank you.
Yeah, let us know if you need anything, if that comes back to you. I don't really know. Uh Councilmember Stuart.
Yeah, I know sometimes we give shout-outs to some of our outstanding youth when they win awards, um which I think is pretty awesome. And I wanted to give a shout-out to uh Rishi Hazra, who um has come and presented to this council several times, who worked with the prior council on. Um trying to move forward with the climate action plan. And he was um one of eight students, uh high school seniors, who was selected by the AWC Center for Quality. Community Scholarship. So congratulations to Rishi. He's um really quite an outstanding young person. He um did a project recently at Skyline to get uh filling stations uh in, uh installed so that. And uh worked with the Samamish Plateau Water and the Cascade Water Alliance and um got all the students to sign. Any student that signed a pledge, they would get a free water bottle to try to cut down on uh plastic water bottles at Skyline High School. So um very exciting.
All right, is there anything else? Councilmember Trine? Oh no, I want you to make that motion.
Uh I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh all those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? All right, thank you.